Thank you. We will now move to the non-action agenda item number six, the Old Town Character Area Plan and Zoning Ordinance Updates. I believe we have a presentation from Mr. Yarne and Mr. Carr. Or maybe just Mr. Yarne?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Adam Yarone. I'm a principal planner with Long Range Planning. My counterpart here this evening is Brad Carr, Planning Manager within Kern Planning. Our discussion this evening is to talk about our Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan and Zoning Ordinance Update. To provide some background, this was a city council-initiated item that started back in late August. An update to the -- associated with that initiation was an update to our 2018 Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, a tax amendment to sections of our zoning ordinance that cover downtown, which includes our downtown, downtown overlay and PBD districts, as well as other affected sections as applicable, an amendment to the downtown infill incentive district, and finally directing staff, once those previous items of A, B, and C have been acted upon to update our Old Town Scottsdale Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines as necessary. In terms of our project timeline, as I stated, this started in August through an initiation, and it's gone through a previous Planning Commission non-action meeting back in September, as well as city council work-study session. We've had six open houses in October and November. We've had virtual open houses that have been ongoing since October 26th. We've had a city council work-study session most recently back on the 7th, and this evening is tonight's non-action meeting. In terms of next steps moving forward between January and March of 2022, we'll come back before Planning Commission and City Council for a non-action and work-study session respectively, ahead of a possible recommendation from Planning Commission and possible city council adoption. With respect to those updated considerations that were guided by city council and discussed with the public, they include Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan's vision and values, the provision of quality new development and redevelopment, development type designations, locations, and transitions focusing on height, density, intensity of development, their transitions, and where those locations are mapped, the use of development flexibility and the application of amending setbacks and stepbacks, the provision of interconnected public open space, including street spaces, landscaping, and amenity areas with tree and shade locations, considerations towards our zoning ordinance-based development standards and bonus provisions, in the sense that how we express those bonus provisions and what height could be realized by maximizing those bonus standards, zoning ordinance bonus provisions as to whether or not the community should maintain them, provide greater and better defined public benefits, as well as reexamining the bonus payment calculations. In terms of our public notification, the city has sent out more than 2,500 direct mail letters to affected property owners within our Old Town boundary, as well as provide both email and additional print notifications to more than 140,000 different ways in which folks could get involved in our process. Additionally, we've reached out directly to known community groups within the community of COGS, SCOT, Experian Scottsdale, Scottsdale Chamber of Commerce, Scottsdale Association of Realtors, and Scottsdale Leadership. In terms of public participation opportunities, again, we've held in-person open house events which focused on development types and as well as development flexibility. I do want to note and thank publicly Commissioner Urteil and Gonzalez for their attendance at those open house events. We did offer nine open house events during the time period that we last saw you. Six events occurred based on our participation and registrant turnout. On October 18th, 25th, and November 15th, we had 117 participants out of 167 total registrants. In terms of those self-guided online open houses that was previously mentioned, those discuss visioning, open space, and quality design. Those online open houses have been live since October 26th and remain ongoing on our project website at scottsdaleaz.gov keyword "Old Town Updates." To date, we've had six total participants reported, and I believe that was what was reflected in your staff report. However, nine to date have been provided. In terms of those in-person open house events and where we saw folks come from, the map before you provides some graphic illustration as to where we've seen public participation. Forty-three percent of total participants in those in-person open house events came from outside of our Old Town areas, while 25% were acknowledged to be Old Town business owners, 15% being Old Town property owners, 7% were Old Town residents, and although they're not mapped, we had 10% of our participation coming from areas outside of our city boundary. Now, with respect to tonight's item, we're presenting to Planning Commission what public input was received and what we heard, and ultimately what we might do to respond to those public input comments, as well as what we would do to make those adjustments if we were to do so. And so, this slide presents those initiated items of city council that are currently under consideration as being updates to our Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, zoning ordinance, downtown infill incentive plan, and our Old Town Scottsdale Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines. What you'll note is on the following slides, kind of in that bottom-left portion of the screen, would be those areas in which we would bring possible amendments to. And so, to start with respect to the provision of quality new development and redevelopment, what we heard from the public was that quality development is a priority to focus on, specific to buildings, setbacks, open space, streets, scapes, and streets space continuity, all with a means to enhance the pedestrian environment, as well as continued support for quality design within surrounding contexts. In the vein of what we've reported from what we've heard, we believe that there could be possible amendments to our zoning ordinance, as well as urban design and architectural guidelines, if the desire was to move forward addressing those public input comments. With respect to development types, their designations, locations, and transitions, what we heard was support for development types to guide the development location. We heard comments that the downtown core and historic Old Town are important areas that should not be changed, that is, those areas designated as Type 1 in green, and then historical Old Town designated in green but outlined in that yellow and black crosshatching. There was also an expressed interest from the public to provide more transitions between development types, especially when adjacent to those Type 1 development types, as well as interest in removing the Type 2.5 development type shown in brown near the northwest corner of 70th Street and Indian School. Again, if we were to respond to those public input comments, we would be amending, bringing amendment to the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan, zoning ordinance, and design guidelines. In terms of development flexibility, what we heard from the public was continued support for development flexibility, as well as continued support of public benefits for those trade-offs in development flexibility, as well as support for reassessment of public benefits to ensure that the trade-off of project bonuses are equal to or greater than the public benefits received. And then finally, PBDs with respect to planned block development districts, that they should only include contiguous parcels. So to illustrate what was vetted with the public was two PBDs within our Old Town area, the Museum Square PBD, shown here in orange, only really separated by right-of-way. However, the zoning boundaries connect or are contiguous, different than the non-contiguous PBD of the Scottsdale Collection, shown near the inner southeast corner of Camelback and Scottsdale Road, which has parcels that are not contiguous to each other and further separated by development that is not part of the same development area. In terms of the provision of interconnected public open space, what we heard from the public was continued support for open space as an amenity in Old Town. Specifically, it should be a priority of redevelopment efforts, particularly when bonus provisions are sought. With respect to transportation, infrastructure, sustainability, tourism, and economic development, a background to this item was that this item was previously discussed at a work-study session with city council back in late September, which brought forward the concepts to analyze benefits and costs of development, infrastructure needs, and impact fees, to determine if the city is being reimbursed efficiently, implements a consistent structure for fees, and finally continues to be flexible in adjusting the fee schedule. City council will address this through a separate public work-study session in 2022. And so although city council initially directed staff to make this part of this process, as I mentioned, this will be part of a separate process for city council in early 2022. In terms of the naming convention of downtown or Old Town, background of this item, at that same work-study session in September, there was consensus to retain the name of Old Town. You may note in the bottom-left portion of the slide, the notation for zoning ordinance updates. There are still some lingering areas of our zoning ordinance where staff can't identify strengthening references to our Old Town area, and so that would be something that staff would be looking to do as part of this overall effort. With respect to zoning ordinance-based development standards and bonus provisions, what we heard was support for our current base building height maximums, and we'll cover heights on the next slide, provide more transitions between those development types, as I previously mentioned, especially when transitioning adjacent to those Type 1 areas that has our smallest scale developments, maintaining character of the downtown core and historic Old Town. There was varying support for existing bonus maximum height standards. Some expressed that current bonus maximum heights are too tall, while others supported existing achievable bonus heights are fine as well. In terms of support for open space at the street and pedestrian level as an expected benefit would be something that we heard explicitly from the public, and that Old Town property owners voiced concern about any reduction in current redevelopment potential as a result of changing any of those base development standards or bonus maximum standards. In terms of the current base maximum height, with respect to what's currently provided within Old Town, you kind of see a timeline graph that shows those development typologies and what heights could be achieved over time, focusing on what's in our current plan being the 2018 plan showing areas of our Type 1 reaching 40 and 48 feet, Type 2 reaching 66 feet as a base height maximum, and then finally Type 3 at 84 feet. What you'll note is incremental change, really, I should say, no change in height between 2012 and 2018. The only thing that really changed in this effort was the stratification of a new typology being the Type 2.5. With respect to the current bonus maximum heights, that's where you see perhaps more significant change in those bonus height standards, in that there was never bonus height permitted within the Type 1 areas. However, the greatest change was brought forward, not necessarily in the maximum height that could be achieved, but the expansion of Type 3 areas in 2018 allowed for more areas that could be eligible for an applicant to request, and for Planning Commission and City Council to consider possible heights up to 150 feet in height. With respect to bonus provisions as to whether or not the community should maintain them, provide greater and better defined public benefits, as well as reexamining bonus payment calculations, what we heard was continued support for public benefits as a trade-off for bonus development standards, favoring public open space, major infrastructure improvements, and finally pedestrian amenities. We also heard that our current public improvements list within zoning ordinance is too generalized. We have essentially eight items that council can consider, and from what we heard from the public is that they would like to see those items further refined, as well as support for adding new listed benefits, which could include contributions to public safety or the provisions of public safety within Old Town, the provisions of renewable energy within Old Town, as well as elevated quality design standards. In terms of our downtown infill incentive plan, background to this item was that city council removed references to the infill incentive district as part of the newly ratified Scottsdale General Plan. However, the infill incentive plan remains a redevelopment tool that allows for development standard amendments, fee waivers, and other applicant requests. Through the public outreach process and through city council direction, possible amendments could be brought to this plan if directly sought. And so we're still receiving additional public input from the public, as well as city council on this item. In terms of next steps for public participation, again, we're here this evening as a non-action item for City -- I'm sorry, for Planning Commission to discuss what we heard from the public and what you'd like to see as additional public -- see for additional public input. We have ongoing, as I mentioned, self-guided online open houses, as well as focus groups and community group meetings that, based on city council direction, further public input on height, density, and open space, et cetera, will be discussed, as well as consideration of any additional comments provided by Planning Commission this evening. And again, that'll come ahead of our next non-action meeting with you all later on in February in this follow-up city council work-study session ahead of possible recommendation and adoption hearings. With respect to this evening's item, staff is available to answer any questions, and thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Yarone, and apologies for mispronouncing your name more than once leading up to today. Sheesh, I'm glad you said it out loud. I've been saying it wrong all along. Mr. Carr, did Mr. Carr want to add anything? Okay, so, perfect. So at this time, I'll ask if the commissioners have any questions or comments. Yes, Commissioner Urteil?
I think you did a great job of promoting the -- of soliciting the public input, but there still wasn't a great turnout. And from my two sessions of observation, there was a lot of people, I'll say my age, I won't say old, but from a certain demographic, why are you laughing down there? You know, we got the time to come out during the day, and, you know, we got the opportunity to voice our opinions, but I was -- it dawned on me that it might be good to do some polling, not, you know, just waiting for people to come to you to tell you what they think, but also to get a better sense of the community, you know, get all the demographics, because I'm guessing that the responses were not weighted by demographic. You had eight people, I think, that were from outside the city, and nothing wrong with that. They could have been people who have investments in the city or plan to invest in the city, nothing wrong with that, but I would think that it might be good to wait the responses. You know, there were some, I remember one gentleman that said, "I would like to see the restrictions go back to the way things were in 1968," which took me aback a bit. There were other people that said, you know, "Let's make this an urban jewel." You know, so you got some disparity in there. It might be good to look at it, you know, demographically if you could. Also, something that came out was people said, "Gee, these bonuses, we should be getting as much as we're giving." I'm thinking like, you know, an economist might think, "Well, if it's, if it's, you're not getting any more than you're giving, why would you make the exchange? Why would, you know, why would you give up the money to get something that isn't going to get you any more value?" Which makes me think, are you planning to have, you know, some economic input on this, on cost-benefit? Are we, are we making things nicer for the residents of Scottsdale at such a cost that it keeps the price of housing high? You know, if, you know, in the extreme, you know, if you had a parcel and you could only put a one-story building on it that covered one-third of the land, it would be hard to make, you know, the rents cheap enough to attract anybody other than extremely wealthy. And I realize that's not what you're proposing. I just throw that out as an extreme example. But, you know, if you have an apartment building that is providing so much open space and so much in terms of setbacks, such a small amount of floor space, that it drives the, you know, the cost dictates high rents, I'm wondering if you would have, you know, some economic input on the impact of what residents are suggesting that they would like to see. That's it. Thank you.
Any response to that, or just, thank you?
Thank you, Commissioner Urteil, Madam Chair, for the comments. Well, I have those noted, and thank you very much. Madam Chair, if I could just remind you, I think you had a couple of public comments.
We do, we do, absolutely. I can move along to those. We have, I believe we have Mr. Pedgman present to speak. That will be our first speaker. Mr. Pedgman, if you could, as a reminder, if you could please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Bob Pedgman, and addresses on the record. And staff did an excellent job of holding three massive open houses. Despite what Mr. Urteil says, it was a success. A lot of people showed up. It was amazing, in my opinion. You don't like the outcome, so now you want more people and different kind of people. Anyway, what I heard at those open houses was people didn't like the bonus system. And then people from other open houses, I was in that, said the same thing, and that information is reflected in the staff's report, and all of those public comments that were written during those open houses and the subsequent letters that came out. You've gotten plenty of input, you just don't like it. Now, why is the bonus system questionable? Because for one thing, the trade-off between what the developer gets and what the city or the residents get, in some cases, is not matching. For example, let's take Type 3. The base zoning is 84 feet. So great. Now, somebody comes and says, "I'm going to pay $2 million for public art to get an extra 40 feet." People are laughing at that. It's not an equal value. You want to add open space? That's equal value, maybe. How about parking? Parking was in there, but not mentioned in this report. Public parking, which is probably at around $50,000 to $70,000 a space, that'd be a great exchange. Hey, you want to get an extra, you know, two floors, put some public parking in, because the city is running out of the public parking, you know, lots to put parking space on. That'd be a great exchange, by the way. But let's make one thing clear. The Old Town Character Area Plan is not a zoning document. It's an aspirational document, all right? So this whole Prop 207, it just, that argument doesn't hold water, because there's no downzoning. If you reform these bonuses to, number one, bring them lower and make them be used for more worthy improvements, you still need four votes on the council to approve those bonuses in exchange for the height. So because of that, it's not zoning, it is not entitlement, and so if you modify or reform that, there's no lawsuit, there's no cause for action. That's my opinion. I know that people are going to say, "Well, you're not an attorney." But staff has said plenty of time that it's aspirational. So if you reform an aspirational document, how can you be removing entitlements or downzoning? So I hope that that's what is going to end up happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pedgman. Would any staff choose to respond to that, or should we move to the next speaker? Okay. Great. With that, the next speaker we have is French Thompson. Mr. Thompson, you have three minutes to speak. Please first state your name and address.
Madam Chair, Council, Commissioners, my name is French Thompson. I'm a 40-year resident of the city of Scottsdale. I have a business, 7148 East Main Street, Scottsdale. I've been in that business for 25 years. That's really my backyard. I spend more time in that backyard than I do at my own home. So I live in a single-family home, and I'm surrounded by neighbors that have single-family homes. Most of the people I know live in single-family homes in Scottsdale. Most of the people that I talk to that aren't in the real estate business or the development business, they don't want to see heights, they don't want to see density. These are the citizens that I talk to. I know that there's an awful lot of people in the real estate industry and the development industry that would really like to see all of this stuff happen. Honestly, if there's going to be more outreach, I'd like to see a different generation of people, but I'd also like to know in that outreach, what are their occupations? Some of the virtual stuff seem to be all development pro people in the outreach. When I went to the live meeting, it seemed it was more citizens that really were concerned about downtown Scottsdale and what's going on with downtown Scottsdale. And, you know, the people I were talking to that weren't in the development industry really didn't want to see the bonus heights. They really didn't. They want to see a good downtown. You know, many people have said, "I'm anti-development." I'm not. I want to see really good development. I'd like to see quality development. That's a hard thing to say, what, you know, is quality for one person isn't for another. But I think, you know, a lot of people are really kidding themselves if they talk about affordable housing. I don't really think that Scottsdale is building affordable housing. The one that I know that's been approved was, what, something like four or five units for five years? What happens after that five years? I mean, that's just a joke. It really is. So I think your job up here, my personal opinion, is to watch out what's the best for the citizens of Scottsdale, not what's the best for the developers. You're not here for the developers. They might be people you know, they might be buddies of yours, but you're supposed to watch out for the citizens and pay attention to what they want. So I want you to ask your neighbors, "Do you want 150 feet in your backyard? My backyard is where I work all day long. I don't want to see those buildings in my backyard. Most of my neighbors don't. In fact, the South Bridge 2 project was pulled before it went to a public vote." So we would know what the voters really wanted, and it was pulled so nobody knows what the public wants. If this was put to a public vote, I really think you'd find out that the vast majority of citizens don't want the height and density in Old Town. So I'm just recommending you take off those bonus heights. They don't need to be in the Old Town Character Plan. They don't need to be there. All the zoning is there, it's there, keep all of that, but those bonus heights just don't need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do we have something from Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, so my question goes to that, just to the bonus, the bonus heights. So I think there's been projects that I've seen where, I mean, again, it's somewhat subjective of what the proper trade-off is for, you know, the bonus, but they're going by what the guidelines are, which is, I think, like one of the speakers mentioned, could be in, you know, a couple million dollars in public art for another 40 feet. And I've seen some that I personally feel might be, you know, abusive in that in the past. Is there a way for our next meeting, since we're going to have another meeting like this, to actually give us kind of what those numbers are versus what the, you know, what a real estate appraiser might appraise that increased value to be? Is there something that we can see, and we know what the city is going to receive in exchange for that bonus? But, you know, I'm thinking of one, like the Marquee, for example, where, you know, basically it was all, there was no increased leasable space, very minimal increased leasable space, and the main benefit was that the applicant was able to remove all his underground parking and save to the tune of probably, I think at the time it was like, we talked about $30,000 a stall. So that, you know, that adds up quickly, and I think if I back the napkin math, I'm kind of, I mean, it was like eight figures of savings for the developer, and he kicked in an extra $400,000 in public art or something. I mean, that's a trade-off. You don't need a business degree to figure out, it's pretty, you know, I would do that all day long. So is there a way at the next meeting to show us what those exchanges would look like and what a real estate appraiser or somebody would give a reasonable expectation of what their property value might increase for that?
Certainly. Madam Chair, Commissioner Serena Bradcar, again, City's Planning Department. We do know, obviously, what those values are for the cities, what we have in our ordinance.
We do know obviously what those values are for the cities, what we have in our ordinance. Currently, that's about, between thirteen and fourteen thousand dollars per foot in height, additional bonus height. Similar for each unit, a property would add to the, to the project, about thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars. And every square foot is about thirteen to fourteen dollars as well. So that's the values right now. How that compares to an appraised value, we certainly don't have that right now and maybe we could get that by the next meeting. I don't know. We can look into that and see if we can get that, that value.
I think, one, I mean, it depends on the use, but it seems like the multifamily housing authority sent in a letter and they have a lot of input or a lot of feelings about what we're discussing down here. I'm sure they've got the data of, you know, what a leasable per foot is and per door is. So I'm sure they can get us the data pretty quick on what rents go for in Scottsdale and what you're gonna see on a multifamily unit for another, you know, four stories or five stories of leasable space in a multifamily.
Yeah, we'll definitely commit to look into that.
That'd be helpful.
Certainly.
Thank you. Vice Chair Young.
Thank you. This is actually following up on Commissioner Serena's comments. You know, I, I've seen a couple of projects, notable projects here in Old Town that I, I think we've seen the tangible benefits of these bonus incentives. One of them being the waterfront, which I don't believe we'd have that fantastic park that's there right now that's got the Solari Bridge and, you know, a lot of different community events there, and the other is the Kimsey, I believe. Is, is that something that you might be able to have some examples and what's the ratio of, say, investment in public art? What's the investment in public open space? What's the investment in additional parking? What's, you know, how that cross-section of different incentive tangible deliverables are so that we can kind of understand that? Because I think the, well, from what I've heard, the biggest issue with these bonus incentives is that people aren't seeing what it is that the bonus incentives are actually giving the community. And I can understand that. I mean, we've seen some good development and we've seen some not-so-good development happen in Old Town. So I think that, you know, that would be helpful to understand how this is actually being implemented and used and accessed by the public. You know, kind of changing subjects a little bit here, you know, some of the other things I've heard is, you know, maybe there's a way to incorporate some of those, those dollars into a fund to help with maintenance and upkeep and improvements in Old Town. You know, I look at other cities, you know, this last summer I was in Laguna Beach and San Clemente, and they've constantly got people out there, you know, re-landscaping and fixing sidewalks and everything is just polished and looks great. You know, some of the alleys in downtown, I wouldn't even want to walk down. I mean, they're pretty horrible. So I, I think that there's some, maybe some provisions there that could allocate some dollars for consideration to help improve, you know, those types of areas also. I've also heard talk about better transitions between the different type one and type two. The type two and a half seems to be pretty localized to one particular site, probably for one particular project. But, you know, I'm seeing on the map here that we've got, you know, type one and type three right next to each other. And, you know, that, that transition I'm sure is probably pretty scary to a lot of people. So, you know, maybe figure out and, and maybe provide some more guidance on how that, that transition happens. The contiguous PBD, I mean, I, I, I'm not opposed to that. I think that's probably a good idea. It seems a little scattered to have disassociated parcels within the same PBD. What else do I have here? I think that's all. And, oh, and the other big thing that I heard was still maintaining some sort of development flexibility. You know, what that is, how that equates to the type one, type, or actually, there's no bonus in type one, but type two and type three bonus, you know, you know. I, I guess I just want to kind of understand better, you know, how that flexibility can be implemented into better development rather than just more development. Because I think a lot of people, members of the public are saying, you know, we're getting a lot of development, but it might not always be the best. So I think we just want to strive towards that and I think that's the goal of taking another look at this. And I, I look forward to hearing what comes back from this and hope that we, we continue to have a lot of good active participation, hopefully more participation from the public in this, because I think this is really critical to how the downtown will develop over the next ten to twenty years. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Great. Great feedback. Oh, Commissioner Graham, is that a finger?
Oh, yes, please. Thank you, Chair Higgs. I, I've liked so far a lot of what I've heard, I've heard some of my fellow commissioners say, Vice Chair Young talked about, you know, the transitions from one type to the other. And I, I think the carve-out for the two-point-five, I thought, seemed anomalous. But I've mentioned that on the record, Mr. Yaron, and I appreciate the presentation, by the way. It was, you did a good job and I thought the outreaches, the outreaches have been effective. Mr. Carr, appreciate you being here and talking to us. The, can I just ask, is this, the packet we have of all the feedback, to the best of your knowledge, is that complete?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Graham, it is.
Okay.
We went through and I guess scrubbed or combed through one last time today.
Yeah.
That's why you did receive a little bit additional items here.
Right.
And to reiterate what Mr. Yaron said here is, a lot of these items weren't sent directly to staff and so that's why they may not have ended up initially in your packet. Some of these items got sent directly to council and then were fed to us later today. So.
So may I ask, what is the, what is the confusion as far as the planning commission getting the content that is intended for? Is it just because people are sending residents and stakeholders are sending comments to the city council? Is that what's going on?
Perhaps. I think, you know, the residents want to be heard and that's what they're entitled to do.
Sure.
And they might have sent some stuff to the council and, and thought it might have got to, to the staff and it may, may not have reached us. But it's certainly not our intent to keep anything or hold back anything. We want everything to reach you. We want to make sure that you have all the information and all the input for, for your review.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Carr. I watched the city council study session last Tuesday on this exact subject matter and they covered a lot of issues, a lot of issues they talked about that we haven't even come close to. And they, I kind of want to bring a couple of those up. One of these is already brought up, but this flexibility keeps getting brought up and, you know, flexibility is great in, like, your weekend plans. It, it's great, you know, on a vacation. It's great, you know, that sounds like a good thing, but it's, in, in something I think consequential is this, what flexibility can also be is, it can mean, something can mean something, anything to anyone. We don't want flexibility when we interpret our state constitution. We want it, the words to mean what they mean. And so when we give flexibility, I think, I was on record the last time, this was on, at the commission, that I think that in the definition section of the Old Town Character Plan, that it would be great to define flexibility. Is that, is that a range, just, you know, more specificity, specificity about flexibility? So we can kind of contain flexibility. I'm sure, Mr. Anderson, you're thinking about, from that, from a legal standpoint, what that may or may not mean. So I wanted to bring that up. There are, there are, I agree with members of the council that said that there have been other cities in North America that have been crushed by going vertical. You can, we can build as high as we want, we can go one-fifty, we can go higher, but you will, you will fundamentally and radically and axiomatically change your city. So we need to think about consequences from that verticality. I wanted to talk about shutting down streets on record. I, I think that, that idea, street shutdown, I don't, I don't know if that's right for Scottsdale, for our downtown Scottsdale. I don't know of anybody, any major stakeholders down there who have approbation for that, approval for that idea. So I'd, I'd like to express that sentiment. There's been some discussion about alleys and alleyways and that's fine and all, but I think that the, and this was, this has been brought up already a little bit, but, and I think, well, I know Vice Chair Young talked about it, but talking, we, I think we need to, it's nice to kind of get back to the basics a little bit. We've gone down to Old Town and we've seen some of the oxidized and rusty benches and other architecture, the uneven sidewalks, the, the blind corners, the, the displeasing alleyways and dark corners, the lack of uniformity and, and consistency in the lighting, both, I think, in the color, luminosity, I mean, you could, a whole host of things. I mean, we're not a dark, we're not a dark sky city. It's, let's, let's, let's get some nice, nice lights on. And I'm not trying to lecture city staff about that. I, I just, I think that, I think that improvements could be made, whether that requires a fund like Vice Chair Young was talking about. I think that actually might be a very meritorious idea. You, we, some of these basic things, I mean, back to the basics, it's not flashy. It's, because when you walked in the downtown, some of the city infrastructure and architecture's getting tired, falling over, and we have the manpower, we have the people power to, to, to keep that going. We have great city staff working here. So I'm not lecturing city staff, but I do think that there is some merit to that idea. I mentioned the smooth sidewalks, blind corners, alleyways, that kind of thing. Bonus system. Mr. Commissioner Ortell, who is a, who is an economist, I should mention, you know, this is an exchange transaction, right, between developers and the city. And it's not really, it's a public versus a private transaction, an exchange transaction. From a theoretical standpoint, both, both parties that enter voluntarily into a transaction should be better off. Isn't that kind of how they define it? So it, yeah, maybe it doesn't have to be equal value, but I think some of the members of the council were talking about advancing the clarity in what city residents can expect from a bonus system. And that's something else that members of this commission have talked a lot about. Are the benefits clear enough? Are they defined? Going back to definition, I like to get these things defined, so. And I, I agree a lot with what Vice Chair said, Vice Chair Young said about, you know, waterfront, the connectivity, the open space. I think there's merit, I think there's, I think there's something to say about, why can't parking or, you know, additional parking, public parking be part of the bonus system exchange? I wanted to talk a little bit about cars, vehicular traffic or vehicular transportation. And I think that I agree with some more members of the council that said, "We drive cars." So this goes back in addition to, tangentially to shutdown of streets, which I think is kind of an anti-car, anti-car sort of policy, and anti-parking. Some of this anti-car, anti-parking rhetoric is great if you're, we're more of a coastal, urban, dense, denser city, but we're not. We're, you know, this is Scottsdale, so we rely primarily on cars, vehicular traffic or vehicular transportation. And I don't think we should supplant, I don't think we should supplant vehicular transportation with bicycling or bike, or biking routes, even though those are great. So that, if that could be part of the conversation. And the last thing I want to talk about, before I, before I probably take up too much time here, is development quality. If you drive around this Phoenix, Tempe, I mean, there's some really serious, we, we think ourselves, we think of ourselves as Scottsdale and so we, we deserve that Scottsdale quality of development. If you go, you know, you drive around places in Tempe and Phoenix, they're getting some pretty good development projects, some pretty high quality. I mean, there's, there's a mix and it depends where you go and what kind of project, but, you know, if that, if they're getting those, we should be, we should really push ourselves to get the best, to obtain and achieve the best, the best and, best and highest quality development in Scottsdale. I think that's what our residents deserve. I think we've earned that. I think they've earned that, being here, and I think it's, that's what, that makes the most sense. One of the members of the council said that a lot of people, she acknowledged that a lot of people, a lot of people want to move here. Way more people want to move here than we can, than we can, than can, than we can let in, or I should say, house. And that's great. That's, that, we, that's a position we want to be in, we're, we're in an enviable spot. But she also went on to say that if we made space for everybody who wanted to live here, the Scottsdale that we have today will be gone. So we would have to say goodbye to that. And I don't think the people that worked hard to be here, a lot of them are, don't want to give up why they moved here. So they want to, they want to, they want, they, they want that balance, they want the quality, and they want to, at some level, keep Scottsdale, keep the Scottsdale that they wanted to move to as it is. So those are some remarks. I'll probably have more. I appreciate, and I, and some of that I kind of fed off my fellow commissioners, but I appreciate this conversation that's going on. I know that this is gonna be back at our commission in a couple of months. And then after that, I think it's gonna be back for, for a final recommendation vote. I look, I plan to make, I hope to make one of the outreach meetings and, and so I'm just very appreciative for the time staff has put into this. And I appreciate also Chair Higgs for the time allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. I'm just gonna add in one thing, there's a key word that you said in there, balance, and I think that's really what we're all trying to achieve, is how do we balance this, this growth that i- is good in a lot of ways, right for the economy, but also making sure that we are maintaining as much of Scottsdale as we know it today as we can. So that balance is important. I think, you know, final comment maybe from Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you, Chair. One of the things I wanted to touch upon that I was thinking of earlier, actually, I've been thinking about it since we went to the last meeting for the public meeting for the Old Town Updates. The thing about, and I've been involved in developments, that what, what they did do was, on some of the bonuses, they allow, they use, utilize their art. They put art into the, the bonus calculations, which everybody can appreciate art, everybody likes it, there's no doubt. But yet, they used, they took this bonus and enhanced their own property, which, if they're gonna enhance their own development, that's fine, and I think they should do that. I think that should be part of an ordinance or something. I like to see, you know, art, but when it's public art, although it's called public space, it's really not public. You have to go into that development to be, to, to realize that practical art. And I would like to see if the, when the bonuses, bonus stipulation comes or changes or whatever, whatever happens, I really would like it to be seen more as more of a public art space. Either, you know, they can utilize that money for art in our public spaces here, like on the mall, because everybody acknowledges this mall is, is a beautiful mall and we're making it even better. And we're putting out public art. I remember as a little boy, I went with my father and we picked up Luis Nevelson and picked up that big piece of sculpture for, from Luis Nevelson. And I always remembered how those big art pieces and some of those pieces on the mall was really enjoyed by everyone. And these bonus calculations affect everyone. So I think, number one, I think that's what I personally would like to see. So I'd like to see the bonus stipulation as far as the art, not leave the development. I think the developer should pay that just as a matter of making his development a better, better piece. I'd like to see more public art being utilized that way and put out for everyone to see rather than somebody who's gonna maul around in the courtyard waiting for their appointment or something. The second thing I, I always was thinking of in about, about almost fifteen years ago, when I was on the historic preservation, I tried to do a zoning, HP overlay zoning on Old Town as, as far as the Fifth Avenue shops and stuff like that. I always envisioned that go being kind of like what I had seen in Europe. And the reason why I thought of that is because Europeans had the first malls, there were the open-air malls and, you know, there were- the open-air malls, and, you know, they were pedestrian-friendly. And basically, unless you had a little motor scooter, you weren't going to go down that street. And so when I went and revisited a lot of those projects later on in the eighties, it seemed to like a lot of those malls were going back into transition of being pedestrian-only, not even allowing motor scooters. Anyway, you can go to Rome, you can go to any country. Even Glasgow now is very famous for their new mall, pedestrian-friendly mall that they put in. I always envisioned Fifth Avenue at least being that way. And I'd still like to be able to see if there was not a way that we could utilize or have some pedestrian-friendly type of walking mall or something to that, to that major point. And, you know, that may not be practical anymore because of the parking and everything. And I realized the merchants would have to be involved with it, and it'd be, you know, there'd be a lot of give and take to it. The, you know, the merchants, even in the newer cities in Europe, they always were reluctant because they had to give something away to create that. But if, and then the, the cities later on would take a poll, like ten years later, and all the merchants who were against it were for it, only because they got to see what it really did for them. And if, if that could be a reality, that, that would be great. And, and I don't know if it's practical now with the way the parking is and everything. But one of the things I also was involved with, with development, that one time we went into before was the Rose Garden, which is over there on Goldwater Way and Fifth Avenue, is that, because that's one of the last public big pieces that we have to play with and, or do something with, wouldn't it be nice to be able to maybe put some parking on either side of the Mallways or something to create a pedestrian mall? And that's just a thought. It may not, it may not be practical, it may not work, may, you know, maybe nobody, nobody wants it. But it's something I'd like to see just brought forward. Whether it works or not, you know, would depend on the public, because we're all basically, we live here, or if we don't live here, we want to shop here, we want to work here, we want to do whatever we can here in the, in the downtown area, the old downtown area. I keep seeing, year after year, it, it keeps building up, even with the COVID last, like last weekend, we had the farmer's market at two o'clock, up to two o'clock in the afternoon, then they shut it down, and then they put in the, the memorial for the Guadalupe. I don't know if anybody, I didn't see anybody I knew there except the mayor. But, you know, the downtown area is just getting so busy and so pedestrian-friendly that, you know, it would be nice to be able to do something more and integrate the pedestrian activity more so than just the parking. I, I realize that parking's always going to be an issue, but I think that if we plan ahead on it a little bit, I think it might be able to, to work on it. The only thing that, you know, I also noticed, which was, you know, to some detriment, but it's part of Old Town, is that along Scottsdale Road, and I, I don't think it was Second Street, but I think it was First Street, where there were a couple mishaps there, where pedestrians would, don't have a light there to walk across Scottsdale Road, going east to west or west to east. Yet, there's, there's no lights, but pedestrian, you know, the brickway is there to, or the cobblestone effect is there for people. But yet, the cars going up and down Scottsdale Road at that, at night, late at night, and with all those exterior lights going, really can't see those pedestrians. I would like to see, be able to see within the, the plan, some sort of pedestrian byways or something, just like what we have on the, on the canal bank over on McDonald's, whereas they have flashing lights or, you know, like the one over at Karen Commons. Because, you know, I had a real feel for that as being a safety issue, because I, you know, I saw a lot of near misses there. And we were walking, and I always walked that area anyway, just to see. And it's getting so robust and everything, and that's what we want. We want a robust downtown. Let's protect the pedestrians. Let's make it friendly for them, because at this point, I don't see it being that way. But anyway, those are my two cents and everything. I hope all this works and everything, because I really love the Old Town. I don't live in Old Town, but I like coming here on the weekends. And we're putting on more. The Scottsdale Dazzle is here. There's so much pedestrian way over there by that bridge, over there by the waterway and the Solari area, that, you know, we could, it's an easy transition for, to move people from there and to get more in this area, not because of the bars or anything, but because we can integrate Noriega's old stables and everything into more of a usable space, just because, you know, like where the Museum Square area is going and that development, that's going to be about the first big driver for that area, I feel. And that's going to bring a lot of people and everything. But you're not going to get a lot of people walking from here over there without some sort of tran, you know, pedestrian transitional going. And I think that would help solve a lot of our density problems also, that we wouldn't have to be so dense in one area to fulfill another area. I think, you know, a good central plan, I know, I went to a couple meetings seven years ago over at the Museum of the West, and there was a, there was a focus group the downtown merchants had, and they were trying to, they were suggesting this too. But unfortunately, with all the different things and the new developments and everything, a lot of things got taken aside. And so we really didn't follow through on those, a lot of good suggestions. So that's one thing I'd like to see. And I think it'll be a very positive thing, because Old Town is more than just, you know, Second Street and the bars and Fifth Avenue, although Fifth Avenue is our gem. I would like to see it, you know, go spread out to the rest of the city as far as the downtown area. So that's just my wishes and desires and hopes. And I'm sure you guys will figure out something. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Not to, to belabor, to, to belabor the comments, but one quick question for staff regarding a lot of the comments that Commissioner Gonzalez had was around, you know, pedestrians. And I think a lot of that would mostly fall within transportation, having served on the Transportation Commission. Is this, is the Old Town Scottsdale Character Area Plan shared with the Transportation Commission? Or the, I'm, I'm just curious as to their involvement as well?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the question. With respect to the comments made by Commissioner Gonzalez, we have, our plans dovetail each other.
Uh huh.
And so with respect to some of the larger ideas, we would certainly make reference to the implementing tool of the character plan as being the transportation plan. However, there are elements within our design guidelines to talk about making way for pedestrian spaces and street scapes alike. And so that's where we would look to, to further strengthen that through any efforts that we're currently working on, such as this matter.
Great. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it makes sense. There's a lot of intersecting points. I'm trying to not be too cheesy, but there's definitely some cross, they tie together. I'll just leave it at that. Okay. So since this is actually a non-action item, no vote will be made by the, the Planning Commission tonight. I do want to thank everyone that's taken the time to come and share their thoughts, to present for our, Mr. Pedgman and Mr. French for sharing their ideas from the community, as well as all the great feedback here on the, on the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, if I could just, for folks that might be watching or-
Sure, sure.
-or if folks happen to be in holiday celebrations and want to further promote our public outreach process, again, if you go to scottsdaleaz.gov keyword "Old Town Updates," you'll find access to our virtual online open houses that we're still looking to engage folks on. And then in terms of what we do in the coming year, we'll, we'll have some additional live sessions available that will be posting regular, regular updates and for those opportunities as well. So scottsdaleaz.gov keyword "Old Town Updates." Thank you.
Great, great plug. Thank you.